Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting on September-
Recording in progress.
Huh?
Yes, it's just recording.
On the red light.
Thank, thank.
On September 5th at 6:10, we just recessed from non-public. We will start with saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Point of order. Our transfer station department head, Peter Gagnon, can't make it here early, so we're going to shift 5.3 transfer station fees payment methods all the way down towards the end of the meeting so that he can make it here because he has to close the transfer today. All right. Citizens input. Anybody online have anything to discuss about the agenda today?
I don't see any hands.
I don't see any hands. Anybody in this massive crowd out before us? I don't see any administration announcements for the RFPs. Updates on gas and propane contract, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have two RFPs out currently, one is for the hazardous waste day. The deadline for submittals is September 16 at 4:00 p.m. The other RFP that's out now is for ground maintenance, and that's due to be returned no later than 4:00 p.m. on September 14. Regarding gas and propane, about a week ago, I signed the contract with your blessing, with Palmer, for a unit price per gallon of $2.775. We are currently paying $3.98. We will be saving $1.205 per gallon as a result of working with the schools. And while I have an opportunity, I want to thank Trish McCarthy and SAU 17 Business Office, who did most of the heavy lifting related to this, if not all. And we're grateful to have their partnership because I believe that had a direct bearing on the price that we received from Palmer. Regarding the propane update, our contract, excuse me, the school's contract with Palmer doesn't expire until June 30, 2024. So they couldn't open it up to include us. Palmer really wasn't interested in doing that. So Palmer submitted a bid that was just for the town alone for about nine and a half or 10 months, whatever gets us to June 30, time-wise. We are currently paying $1.99, and Palmer has put in a bid of $1.49 per gallon, a saving of 50 cents per gallon. So I would recommend that the board, what's it, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. The school contacted eight different gas and fuel companies, and two responded, Hafners and Palmer. And Palmer, the other ones didn't respond. They had a ton of messages about the volume at the school is something that they couldn't commit to. I don't know what that means in terms of volume for the schools, but I think Palmer's the way to go based on the information that we have and you have in front of you.
I'd like to make a motion to award the propane fuel bid to Palmer Gas and Fuel out of Atkinson, New Hampshire at the price of $1.49 a gallon. Palmer is the lowest qualified bidder. I further move to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract.
I'll second that. Seconded by Joe. We have to do roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the ambulance purchase and EMS contract.
We have representatives of the fire department here. We also have Trish, who works in the same building. She listens to other people's conversations, so she's up to speed. The chief is, has been very helpful. He got two other quotes from two other companies. In addition to Greenwood, which is a 2023 Horton ambulance, he contacted Bulldog Fire and Emergency Apparatus as well as Allegiance Fire Rescue. Both Allegiance and Bulldog will not have an ambulance available till 2026. And as a result of that, they couldn't commit to a hard number because Ford will be changing its chassis in 2026, and they don't know the financial impact in the overall price. And I would point out that neither of the two companies, Bulldog nor Allegiance, indicated that they would transfer our current interior equipment to the new one. Greenwood said they would do that. It's included as part of the cost. Should have a spreadsheet. Did that get up that you can look at?
Yes.
Is that for the funding?
Yeah, yeah. Do you know the total price for Horton?
$375, $378,500.
So it better be a not-to-exceed number? That's probably the way the motion should go if you're inclined to do something tonight, a not-to-exceed number. Also, for your information, there are four funding sources that we believe can be tapped, all requiring your permission. It's the Fire Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund, the Ambulance Revolving Fund, the OPERA Grant, and the Emergency Operating Revolving Fund. All four of those are non-lapsing funds. They carry over from year to year. So although the numbers exist today, total up enough to buy the ambulance. We don't have to pay for it until it arrives. So again, we're looking out. None of the money's coming from the budget. It's from established accounts, and we believe the numbers that are there today will grow over time because interest and maybe additional deposits will change that, especially the the Ambulance Revolving Fund for the transports that we get paid for through a third-party payments. So if you're comfortable enough, I believe that Chief Alguadino is really leaning towards the Horton. And the vendor would be Greenwood Emergency Vehicles out of North Attleboro, Massachusetts.
So question for you. When you say "we believe," has DRA given any sort of opinion on this?
Regarding?
Regarding whether we can use all of these. In other words, all of these funds have language associated with them-
Yep.
-as to what can be used.
Right.
And I'm just playing devil's advocate. Has that language been kind of socialized with DRA? So what you see where my fear is, is that if we turn around, DRA is normally the agency that tells you you can't do something. And hopefully, we don't find that out at the wrong time.
I do believe that DRA has not weighed in, so I don't want to make any representation even remotely close to that. But I will tell you that the Fire Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund was for the purpose of purchasing fire apparatus, and that includes rescue vehicles, which is what we're talking about tonight. The Ambulance Revolving Fund can be used for anything the board wants to expend it on. You are the agents to expend. As far as the OPERA grant goes, the committee met on Thursday, and there was unanimous agreement that it would be appropriate to put some money into the bucket, so to speak, from OPERA because it's an appropriate expenditure under the OPERA rules. And then the Emergency Operating Revolving Fund is something that you have control over. I believe this is newly established.
Yes.
And that's a most appropriate use. So, no, I didn't run it by DRA. I didn't run it by Town Council. All of the sources appear to be pretty clean and easy to understand that it's an appropriate use of those monies. So I know that doesn't make you feel any better that we didn't use DRA.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it should be enough to hold anything up right now, but I'd like to know that we kind of get a thumbs up because, you know, the picture I'm trying to paint is we go and order this thing, it goes through the process, and then they're looking for their check, and then DRA tells us that 90K won't work. And now we're more than halfway there, so we're trying to find 90K. So it's just, I'll sleep better at night.
I will contact them. I mean, I would like the board to make a commitment tonight, and you can always-
Exactly.
-back out of it. That being said, there was some discussion about the Fire Apparatus Capital Reserve being for firefighting equipment. While that's a logical assumption, they have never been two different departments. It's always been fire rescue. And as a result of being fire rescue, by function and duties, it incorporates rescue vehicles. I mean, it's a given. So I'll do that.
Yeah, just playing devil's advocate here.
I would not be surprised if they would not weigh in.
So with that said, excuse me, a couple stipulations. So if we agree to purchase the vehicle, which needs to be done by tomorrow, they have to have the green light, otherwise, from what we've been told, it will go up 10% already. The costs have already increased because of inflation and all of that. The only way that we would end up having to pay anything is it is a, I believe it was a 1% fee once they commence work. So if we agree to it and we get that right into the DRA just to double-check with everything so that we would be able to cancel, if the case is not made for these accounts to be able to pay for the ambulance, that would be the ideal situation to go with.
Yeah, that works.
All right? You know what I'm saying? But we need to go ahead and put the stamp of approval on it tonight so that Greenwood will uphold and stick to the price that they gave us in this contract. Now, if it goes past the 6th, then the numbers are going to change, and it's going to be a lot more money.
That's correct. This is a replacement vehicle for a very tired rescue vehicle that we currently have. Spends a good deal of time at the mechanic shop, and this is an absolute single request that we're making, which is to replace that vehicle with a new rescue vehicle. And it has no current bearing on where we go long-term with providing EMS services to the residents of this town.
Yeah.
Lieutenant Peter Jena-Lunison fired. I just wanted to, while we're on the topic of the ambulance, let the board know that our current ambulance, A1, is out of service right now. It had a mechanical failure yesterday, or I'm sorry, on Sunday, and it still has yet to go to the dealership. It has an appointment for tomorrow, but as of right now, we do not have an ambulance in service in town.
With our town EMS, just so everybody's clear, we still have ambulance service for the town. It's just not our-
We do. I just wanted to add that on to, as far as-
So they don't get called.
He was making a point about replacement for a very tired ambulance. I thought that'd be a good time to mention that. It currently is out of service.
It's a 2005, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is.
It served its purpose.
Yep, it is. That's all.
All right, thank you very much.
So is a motion in order?
So, I mean, I guess it has to be said, you know, typically what we do is we look for three quotes, especially when we're spending this money. But it, you know, basically, we don't have apples to apples, I think is what we're saying. So we have two vendors that are not, I mean, they're, they're, no.
That are not willing to commit.
There are two vendors, and they're not like fly-by-nighters or anything like that. They're like two legit sources that aren't willing to commit. So, you know, just to be clear with people, that three-quote policy is a selectman's policy, which the selectmen have the ability to overrule that policy. And, you know, timing's everything, right? So, I mean, 2024 is, as the lieutenant just said, I mean, that's, that's even kind of far away when we have our in-house ambulance on its last leg. So the time to strike is now. It's clearly something we need to replace, no matter what happens. You know, as we've talked about in this meeting, our EMS support is going to look different as of March of 2024. We don't know exactly how that's going to look, but no matter what, we're going to need this ambulance, so.
Well, with that said, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the agreement to purchase the Greenwood, the ambulance from the Greenwood Horton ambulance, not to exceed $380,000.
Second.
With the money that come from those four funds.
Yeah, with the money that comes from the funds that we, I might as well put that in there, I guess, with the motions come from the Fire Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund, the Ambulance Service Revolving Fund, the OPERA Grant, and the Emergency Operating Revolving Fund. This is money that is already in there and no burden to the tax here.
Still second.
And Dan seconded it.
I'll add language that we will sign, should there be, I should say this, should there be language in there that says we'll only sign it after a check is done to validate those funds? I know I barely heard Matt and Jim talking, but I know that there's going to be a check of one of the funds to make sure.
And I think what Bob just indicated a few minutes ago was the language, language is already in there that we can back out before, before the, you know, I don't know, the-
All right, so no penalty to us?
Yeah, yes, it's in there. And like I said, so if they stop, once they stop building it, we, you know, at any point, we have the right to back out. However, once they start to build the ambulance for us with those specs, then we end up having, and we back out. We pay a 1% fee for the total overall cost plus an additional fee towards the hours that were spent for the work done on the ambulance.
No, I saw that language. I guess I missed the other. Okay, I'll go back. I'll retract that. I'll go back.
So other than that, we do have the option to just back out and not make the purchase.
That works.
All right, roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous. And with that being said, while we're on the subject, I've been putting it out there and talking with people in my neighborhood and stuff, and I want everybody that isn't here watching this, as Matt would say, a million viewers, but anybody that watches this in the future, that it's very important that everybody's paying close attention to what's going on here. We needed the ambulance regardless of anything, but right now, we're trying to decide as selectmen, and we have all the failures out there about ambulance service. This town used to be supplied with free ambulance service from a family that provided ambulance service for several different communities at no charge. That family has sold their business, and the people that purchased it is a group of investors that are looking to get a return on their investment. So there is no more free in that ambulance service that we were receiving after hours to when we would have some of our people on call after the, I believe it's what, 4:30?
Four. It varies.
Four, right, roughly. So sometime between four and five. After that, our guys would be on call, but then we had the ambulance services, which would be put out there. This new company that purchased that ambulance outfit, Pride Star, they wanted to just put two ambulances to serve six communities. Both of those ambulances are housed right now in Hampstead and Atkinson, which is over a half hour time by the time they receive the call, for them to be able to come to this town if someone's in a 911 crisis, whether it be a heart attack or whatever it is. So we've been in communications with the chief, and I've been sitting in the meetings as of lately with the out-of-fire chiefs and stuff, and we put bids out to try to get three ambulances and then maybe get one closer to what would be Plastow, just to see what the funds are. And I will say this, so the one contract that they wanted to do with the two ambulances, they added an extra month, and the cost was going to be, I believe it was $142,000 or $146,000, that these other towns wanted everybody to pay a piece of the prize. And in doing a little investigation with that, I did a census as of 2022. So Danville and Newton are basically close together. Danville with 4,500 residents, Newton with roughly just over 4,800 residents. And these other towns that wanted us to pay an equal pot, Sandown, 6,600, Hampstead, 9,100, Atkinson, 7,300, and Plastow, 7,800. And I say this, why? Because that means if they have more people, the use of those ambulances are going to be more prevalent in those towns, which means as of that contract, if those two ambulances are being used in one of those other several communities, no ambulances is responding to the town of Newton when it comes. So that's important for everybody to understand and to know that at 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night, or whatever time it is, when you call 911 and you're waiting for an ambulance, and then by the time they get it and then their call comes back saying that they can't respond, those loss of minutes are critical to the livelihood of whomever it is that's in that crisis. So we, like I said, we're seeing what's going on with that. Dan has been in touch with the Plastow Fire Chief to what they're doing, to maybe we can talk with them to see if we can't get a coalition between the two communities with Plastow and Newton. We're looking at all different avenues to do this. But for one, and I know the rest of the selectmen here don't feel like we want to just take $140-some-odd thousand and cast it out there to the point to where we're not going to get any type of return on that money. So we're looking to see what we can better get for that investment and how we can make sure that the people of this town are covered with popular ambulance coverage so that nobody needs to worry that if they have an episode, that somebody's not going to be able to come and help them and rescue them. So if you hear this, please tell your neighbors. Please, please tell your friends. Please tell everybody in this town, because the other point of this that comes to it is this figure that I just threw out there. We're going to be starting the budget season coming up. So one way or another, this new budget is going to be affected because of this. And this is somehow going to get rolled into that one way or another to whatever it is we're going to do. So I don't want people to be shocked at the last minute when they see the warrants and they see the budget and it comes out and say, well, what is this? I'm putting it out there now. Please, people, I beg you, I implore you, please, talk to one another. Come to these meetings. Have discussions with us. Let us know how you feel. Let us know what's going on. We are here, elected officials, to serve you, right? We, the people, we need your input because without you, our hands are tied. And I would hate for us to say we couldn't do anything for any type of other ambulance coverage and to sit by and watch the people of this town suffer.
The key thing I'll add to that, just so everybody's clear, is the key date is the end of February 2024, right? Okay? So let's just be clear about that. We currently have ambulance coverage. Is it the best possible scenario? No, it never really has been. But just so everybody knows, what Bob's talking about, we're planning for right now. We currently, we just heard that our one in-town ambulance is out of service, but we do still have ambulances. If something happens to you, hopefully, you don't need one, right? But we still do at the moment, but it's not going to last forever.
And that's basically what I was going to say. We have coverage. We are in a current contract right now till February 28th. So we have, just like Matt said, we have coverage with our current ambulance provider. And this hundred and, you know, this keeps going up. Started out at 50, then it went to 85, then it went to 142. It, this little amount that they want you to put aside is not for this year. It's not for our service now. It's for starting March first. So just so they understand that. Also, this is kind of unofficial, but Plastow did put out an RFP just for them. And just so that you know, a couple have come back, and this is for three ambulances. And both bids, RFPs that came back, was over a million just for Plastow for three ambulances. So you might want to know that.
Thank you.
But I'd just like to point out that if the board has an interim direction that you're contemplating going, and it involves executing a contract, it will appear in the default budget next year in 2024 because you have made that commitment.
Lieutenant?
So I have some notes from the chief, just while we're on topic. As far as you were talking about, you know, delayed responses or possibly no response from the contractual ambulance due to not being available, this isn't far-fetched at all. In August alone, I mean, I have three incidents here within town where they had a 20-plus-minute response. That's, in my mind, that's unacceptable. And we're free, I mean, like we are now, not much of an argument, right? They're providing us a service at no cost. Moving forward, if we're going to pay money, those need to be clearly outlined of what we're going to accept and what we're not going to accept from a contractual ambulance service. And there's going to have to be strict guidelines on, you know, what we need as a town and not just what Atkinson needs and not just what Hampstead needs because, from my point of view, it seems like they're spearheading this whole thing. And they're trying to get this thing together, right? They're the two towns that have ambulances in their fire stations, okay? They get the quick responses because that's where the ambulance is. But they also need the support of towns like Newton to cover this bill. So I just hope that you guys are paying, and I'm sure you are, but close, you know, close attention to that, to make sure that whatever is being put forward, whatever RFPs are being put out, whatever contracts are being presented to you, that they really do benefit this town and the people of this town. And if they don't, then I ultimately suggest that we take over this EMS and we do things our way. And we are able to, we can control that. I mean, if we were to go back historically, I am sure there was more times Trinity was unavailable or a delayed response than we had two calls at once in town. So now Trinity covering six towns or whatever ambulance company ends up with this, it's 50/50 if they're going to be available when an emergency happens in Newton. And that's even going to cut in half again if they're going to be within a reasonable timeframe to respond, so.
We've already had a couple of incidents where they haven't been able to respond.
Sure, sure. Luckily, we have good mutual aid agreements outside, you know, it's around the communities. There are other ambulances, but all that's time. It's always going to be time. There's always going to be give on that side of the argument, right? Yeah, we can get an ambulance here, but, you know, something we say in the world of EMS is time is tissue, okay? Whether that be a stroke or a heart attack or trauma. Every minute that we're spending on scene waiting for a transport is detrimental to the patient. And we can't put a price tag on that. As much as we wish we could, right, and do financially what is best for the town and, you know, people's taxes, we need to be careful. you know, people's taxes, we need to be careful because it's ultimately could cost somebody someday. It might have already happened, we don't, you know, we don't know, that's hard to judge, but these townspeople are entitled to timely emergency medical services, just like anywhere else. So that's all.
Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
All right, staff reports. Trish, you didn't get used to sitting down, did you? We're going to go over lease of land for a cellular tower update.
So again, we're still in the research stage here. So I've spoken to three companies so far, met with two of the three. Just kind of to give you a ballpark, it's interesting, they're very similar in a lot of ways. In some ways, when you finally make your ultimate decision, one of them seems to be able to give us more revenue, but basically what it has come down to, and I don't know, should I say the names of the companies? Not yet, no. So Humpty Dumpty and Donald Duck. So the ones that I've spoken to, just to give you an idea, one of them is going to put a 185-foot tower up. The other one, and they went around with me to different locations in town, and it's interesting, they both narrowed down to one specific best location, and we've talked about that last time I spoke. Can I say that? Yes. Okay. But the second company that I spoke with actually found another location not far from the first one, which was, if you remember, off Dougway. So the second location is also close to that same spot. So for some reason, the strength or lack thereof is calling towers to be there. And then this will help the police, fire, and highway relay calls, you know, like a repeater, it's going to bounce to other areas. What's interesting is one of the towers has the top spot, they both have the top spot for public safety, police, fire, and highway. That's crucial to us. Right now, the tower that we have, we're not on the top, we're close to the bottom. So that's a problem. Both of these companies said, yes, the whole idea of public safety is public safety, so we're on the top. The next spot down in one of the companies, they, whatever revenue they were charged for cell companies to clamp onto their tower, there's five locations on their tower. The next location under public safety, one of the companies is 25% of the revenue that comes into the town, sorry, 25% of the revenue that they get would go to the town, and then when I looked at their document, that isn't how it is. The very next spot under public safety, their entire revenue goes to that company. Whereas this other company that I spoke with, 40% of every single level under it, the four other locations under their tower, 40% goes to town, 60% goes to the company that does all the install. There's no cost to us at all. So the lease, when we say lease, we say, okay, what does that mean? So they're leasing the property from us, both of them so far, like I said, I haven't talked to the third one yet, 100-foot by 100-foot section, they would do all the site work, all the topography, all the fencing. One of the two companies, I asked if the town actually bought a generator, because I'll try to write a grant for a generator, they'll actually wire it so we can plug right in. The other company hasn't said that they'd do that. So one, that's really good, if we lose power, that tower is still going to work really well. The current tower that we have, the town doesn't have a generator to keep it going. So the cell towers that are under that on that same antenna over off 108, some of those have their own individual generators, the town of Newton does not. So that is something that we should look at. They, so the lease piece of it is that they're keeping a certain amount of money, but they're giving us money, and that's like in turn, that's our lease money. So one is really good. One, again, is 40% of all five locations. The other one is the top one, they get everything entirely, the next spot down, they get 25%. And three and four spot down, we only get 15%. One of the companies, it's very interesting, one of the companies is very used to working with municipalities. I talked to them about, you know, we may have to get waivers or variances, we may have to go in front of planning board, how do you feel about that? One company said, yep, we do that, we understand what we have to do. We know that some people, I think Matt, you brought it up last time, you know, there's other concerns, or maybe Dan, you know, people are worried about other things. They have fabulous presentations and can deal with it. The other company said, well, we don't really have to worry about that, we just, you know, put it up. So I got a completely different feeling from one company compared to this other company. They understand warrant articles, they understand that the site work and everything may get started, you know, we're so late in the game now, I don't think anything's going to get started before our warrant articles, but they understand that if we had to wait for that, they're very used to it because of the other towns that they've worked in. And if you want to know one of the other towns, it's Kensington. And they're extremely happy, and I've got pages and pages of stuff from that town that was discussed in public meetings. It doesn't necessarily have to be a public hearing, it was just public meetings, but I've got a lot of input from the town administrator and the EMD there. The third company that I've, we played a little telephone tag, I'm not sure how it works, but they've already got a tower in town, I don't know if they compete with themselves, maybe they do, I don't know. So we'll see what happens when they get to me. But so far, the cost is zero, they take all the site, you know, site costs, any meetings that we have to have, that you want to have, they'll be here, they'll do presentations. It was pretty eye-opening when I met with the second company, I think. Is that it? Questions?
Did they put any timetables on these things for you, or you looked at it?
No, because they know, you know, it really depends on meeting schedules and, you know, do we, because we may need to go in front of either ZBA or planning, because if this is considered a residential area, we got to put that out there, and, you know, people are going to say, what's it going to do to me, am I going to be affected? And I've got, I think, 32 pages of remarks that I could probably tell you, I didn't bring them all, I only brought two. But I think that we're going to be asked the same questions that Hampton got asked, Kensington got asked, and I think Dover was the other one. But we certainly can deal with it, and it will help with our, certainly with our public safety, and it puts us at the top. And we get revenue.
Don't quote me, but I would imagine that that's got to be commercial back there.
I wondered, yeah. I should have looked it up, I didn't.
We have the flower.
Yep.
And the transfer station.
Right. Even though this parcel is on the back, it's 16 acres on the back of that, because we can't do it on that particular town-owned property on Dougway. Yep.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, I know what you mean, okay.
Why don't we check into that?
Okay.
I'll check into that.
Okay.
And see what's going on with that, and then we can move forward. And it would always be good if we could get them to come in and do a presentation.
And both of them said they would. Clearly, one is more prepared than the other one, but that's okay.
Yep, that's fine.
Maybe, I don't know, maybe we have to sequester them, they can't commit at the same time.
Yeah.
Trish, do you have the ability to obtain the contracts for the surrounding communities?
Yes, I can, yes.
A great place to start.
All right.
Not that I want to deprive town council of money, but if somebody's already done the legwork.
Sure. Hook up with Jim, and then you two can get it coordinated, we can get a presentation done here before the board, get a look at these contracts.
Sure.
See what we're looking at.
And then I'll keep going, you know, I'm following your direction, I think, you know, we're getting our feet wet here.
Right.
I don't know how long it'll take, I think it's something that we need, and if it doesn't cost us and we are bringing revenue, oh, here's the other thing, oh, this is really cool. One of the towns, one of the ways they said that residents thought this was even better than, you know, they might have been persuaded to say no, and now they said yes, was the revenue that came in, what they did is they said, you know, so let's take the one that says 40% is coming into the town. What they did is they broke it up and said, X amount of percent is going to go to offset taxes, so they loved that. And then the balance of that percentage went for public safety, so it was split between police, fire, and highway. So that might be something to think of, it certainly would help offset taxes, and it might be an easier pill to swallow if there's skin in the game for them. Right?
So at the end of the day, we're looking not to have a wasted effort. If you are interested in us going further and pursuing this, while recognizing that we have to do a lot of PR associated with this venture, and if you're not interested, just tell us and we'll go in another direction, but this appears to be the best solution for a number of problems regarding communication in this community.
Yes.
Well, let's pull the board. Mike, you in favor of pursuing this?
Yeah, I was mic'd off. Yes, I am in favor.
Oh, Matt?
Yeah, from a concept standpoint, yes.
Okay.
Dan?
Yep.
Joe?
Yes, most definitely, it's going to help with a lot of our dead spot communications and time.
Yeah, so we're all interested.
Okay, good, I'll keep going.
Let's pursue this, please.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, I did receive a call today from one of the vendors that Trish met with, asking why he couldn't be on the agenda. And I explained to him that this will be a competitive process, and it would be an unfair advantage to have you walk in the door first and give a presentation when we have a sought information from all the other vendors that might be interested in doing business with the town of Newton. He immediately got what I said. And as far as presentations go, they should all be in the room at the same time.
Yeah.
You can't give anybody a leg up, you know, so if you do it over time, want a meeting, the person who goes last already knows all the good stuff that's being offered, and they're going to change their presentation. So it'll be a long night, but we should get everybody who's interested to come and give the board a presentation. He talked about specifications, and I said to him, we don't have specs, it will cost money to get it specked out, we're looking at the most favorable proposal from a vendor that will be in the best interest of Newton. So that's got to come in the form of how they put the words on the paper, and then we'll decide.
Right. All right, thank you, Jim. Trish, why did you sit?
I was like...
Next is ARPA and EOC and Conservation.
Sorry.
That's all right.
So ARPA did meet last week just to confirm a couple of things on spending and where we are, and we did approve setting aside, you know, that $80,000 towards the rescue truck. The, finally, the beach and park stuff came in, the grills on the table, there was a little bit of a problem with that, but we worked it out, and they finally delivered it and didn't charge us extra, which I wouldn't have paid. So that was good. The EOC, we've had a few people that have called with the heat index, and some I've had to help go pick up fans that they already bought, and they, for whatever reason, they couldn't get to Walmart, there's a plug for Walmart. But other than that, things went pretty slow, I monitored it, but I didn't completely open it, I didn't have to stay there 24/7 or anything, although who knows what this week will tell. And then Conservation, just the update there, is the bush farm, there's a huge amount of work being done on the bush farm, we're really pleased. The autumn olive has been taken down, the Japanese knotweed is down, the spurge is down, and now we're going to do, when we meet next week, we're going to organize a little work group to reorganize the signs for the trails, so people will realize, you might see signs out there, you people in TV land that say trails closed, but it's because we haven't gone back out to reorganize what we're going to leave open and what we're trying to leave for habitat, animals, and vegetation. But other than that, things are pretty good.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Approvals, MS 232 to accept.
Thank you, Skip, propane contract.
Did he?
Under approvals, first bullet.
He did that.
He did that, when we talked about that.
Oh, okay.
Propane's is done.
Daniel, eh, you.
Well, no, I was saying, approval, yeah. I'm all screwed up.
No, that's all right. And so I'm glad somebody's checking with me.
I'll move to accept and sign MS 232, report of appropriations actually voted.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's unanimous. Next is MS 1 assessing.
Wait on one, who's the one we're waiting on?
Yeah, but are we moving to accept this one? Has it been done yet?
Yes, that's...
On the assessor?
The MS 1, is that the one you said to wait on, or no?
No, 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 we want to get that done.
Yeah.
That's a summary of the inventory evaluation.
Yep, that's correct.
Needed for the, come up with a tax amount.
I move to accept and sign the DRA MS 1 summary inventory evaluation as recommended by our contract assessor.
And I'll second that?
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's unanimous. F slash R vehicle funding sources.
I think we already covered that during the presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that should not have been on, it's my fault.
It's all right. Manifest.
I move to approve withdrawal in the amount of $3,300 from the recreation account to pay for the, pay an invoice to Royal Tours.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $774.70 from the cable revolving fund, account number 391293, to pay for an invoice to HP Financial Services and Armon Networks.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $100 from the emergency management fund dated August 29th, 2023, to pay for an invoice to Estabrook's Garage.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, unanimous.
I move to approve the vendor manifest in the amount of $50 dated August 29th, 2023, to pay for an invoice to the state of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, unanimous.
I move to approve the vendor manifest in the amount of $1,500 dated August 29th, 2023, to pay for an invoice to KMA Treat Service.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, unanimous.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of $73,858. Nah, that's a comma, all right. $73,858.47 for a pay period of August 13th through August 26th, 2023, with a pay date of August 31st, 2023. This manifest includes $217.04 in ARPA administrative costs.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's unanimous. And...
You want me to do a minute?
Yeah.
I move to approve and accept a public meeting minutes dated August 15th, 2023, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, unanimous.
I move to approve and accept the non-public meeting minutes dated August 15th, 2023, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And I, it just dawned on me that I should have, at the beginning of the meeting, made the motion to secure the minutes from non-public.
Oh, yeah. So why don't I do that? I'm going to move that the board, prior to this public portion of the meeting, went into a non-public, 191A, it's not on here, 3C.
Yes.
And I would like to move that the minutes be sealed from that meeting until such time as the majority of the board deems the circumstances no longer apply.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's unanimous. Now that I got that taken care of, um, transfer station, Peter's been nice enough to make it air after closing up shop so that he can give us a presentation about fees, payments and methods. Thank you for coming, Peter.
Absolutely. Good evening, Board, Pete Gagnon, transfer station manager, how you doing?
Excellent, yeah, thanks.
All right, so let's just get right into the fee schedule. We'll start with town residents first, the big increases, we all know mattresses. I wanted to add a couple of things, I don't know if you guys got a chance to read it over yet, but I had a gentleman in town come to me and say that the fee schedule wasn't specific if he only had like a little amount in a bag or a barrel and he wanted to see that added. So that's what I did, a bag or a barrel of C and D or bulk waste for Newton residents is $5 each, that's what I'm proposing. Same thing for Kingston, East Kingston and Southampton, but it's going to be $10 per bag or barrel. Out of town is always historically paid a little bit more than Newton residents. On the Newton side again, on the TVs, monitors, I want to get rid of the console TVs, very rarely do we see them anymore. I just want it straight flat fee, $20 per TV or monitor, size doesn't matter. That's it on, on the Newton side there.
Pete, what about the times?
The times? The times haven't changed yet because that would require modifying the permit. So the time is still quarter of the hour to.
Okay, but why is there an X there?
It was written down wrong, it said 7:40 on this sheet.
Got it, okay, fair enough.
I put 7:45.
With the TVs and everything, just so the people know out there that we actually get paid for the electronics, correct?
No, no, we pay for those.
Do we?
Right now, there is a guy in town, I'm waiting for a quote from him, he might be able to take some of the items off and probably not TVs, but certain circuit boards and other equipment that has circuit boards and pay us for that.
Oh, that's right.
Won't be much, but I'm just waiting to hear back from him.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the out of town side, we already went over the barrel, mattresses, I'm bringing up to 100 for them. Sofas, I'm bringing that from 40 to 60, again, they've always paid more than Newton residents. Chairs from 30 to 40 and the plastic dishwasher from $5 to $10 per. And then on the, underneath there, I just want to add because we were taking their household batteries, triple As, double As, and their mercury containing bulbs, but those go with the Newton residents hazardous waste and I don't feel we should take that from out of towners anymore. So I just want to get that added, no household batteries or bulbs.
Yeah.
And that basically wraps that up there. What do you guys think?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it, I think it's about time.
Yeah, absolutely. Hopefully, when I get some feedback from more vendors, be able to readjust these prices. Hopefully mattresses will be able to go down a heck of a lot more, but I'm just waiting.
Mr. Chairman? Peter, in your opinion, how much notice is necessary and when would you expect the board to put a start date for these changes?
Start date, let's give it a couple of weeks, I'd say that. The other towns, yeah, I'd like to give them at least a week or two notice, give them a call, send them an email with the change sheets and whatnot.
I'll go 30 days.
Sounds good.
More than fair.
30 days is fine.
Okay.
More of an ample.
Does that jam you up?
Mike has something to say.
Yeah, and I will, I will start calling all the other towns Thursday to let them know.
I do have a question, should we send out a notice, an official notice from the town that this is happening so that way the, you know, they can't say that they'd never received it? And we should also post it on our website?
I think we should do some flyers at the transfer station physically itself?
Okay.
Yeah.
In the areas?
You want me to just like print off some of these and hand them out?
I think we should probably clean it up and definitely clean it up.
Well.
Mike, we should definitely have a new one made.
Yeah, this, this sheet here has been running since before I started working here, so.
Yeah, I think it's time we updated.
I think Mike has something to say.
Mike?
So, when you, I'd like to go back to your comment on those batteries, household batteries, is that just for out of towners, that include Newton residents?
Correct, just for out of towners, yeah.
Okay, my only, all right, I'll leave it there, we'll talk later.
The, the only thing I'd add, and we don't have to kind of figure this all out tonight, but kind of all you have to do is have signs on the way in that says transfer stations, new transfer station fees effective in the date, something you can read from your car, you know, and then if they.
They can look it up.
They can look it up. And that way you don't, you don't have to print out a whole ream of.
Yeah, and this is going to be on the town's website too, so I can always send them that way as well.
Exactly, and what's going to happen is anybody who has subscribed to the town website, and if you haven't, or millions of viewers, you should.
Courage to.
Because what will happen is every time Robin updates the news items with something like this, it sends everybody an email.
Right.
So that's to stay up to date.
Just for clarification, it's the 5th today, can we do October 1st or we start at the beginning of the month?
Sure, sounds fine.
Couple days in? Okay, thank you, thanks, Pete.
Perfect. When did Mellow start charging separately for mattresses?
This was a this year thing.
So that's actually a breach in their contract because they're supposed to be bulky wastes? So is it, they told you, don't put them inside the containers anymore?
Yeah, and that was the state of Massachusetts as well, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, because it's a state that put the ban on the mattresses, not Mellow.
Sure.
So I was told that somebody that went down to their facility in Georgetown, they have this huge canopy where they're storing all their mattresses and box springs under because they can't get rid of it, you know?
Okay, well, that just gives us another avenue. That's not outlined in the contract?
Mm-hmm.
So if we wanted to go outside and find somebody else to take mattresses?
I believe that is in there under the termination, if we have other bids or something.
But they're not, their price changed.
Yeah.
So whether Massachusetts implemented that on them or not, their pricing changed and it's not listed on our contract. Do you see what I'm saying? Like it's a.
I get you.
It's for our lawyers to decide, whatever, but I'm just saying that, like, that's good that you had that information that it changed this year because now that, that changes it for us because we signed a three-year contract with them and now this is where this fee's coming from because Massachusetts said you couldn't throw them away anymore, you know what I mean? So it just gives us some room, some wiggle room.
So maybe we could find another vendor right?
Which is good, yeah, I mean, we need somebody to reach out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the other big vendors around, I was hoping to find another local guy that could take these things and shred them or whatever they do, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Maybe call another transfer station.
Yeah.
Couple of them.
Actually.
Sand down, whatever.
Yeah.
Just be like, what are you guys doing with them?
Like the plastile.
Oh, you gotta pile out back, you know what I mean?
The plastile transfer stations, they don't touch them at all.
No, the trash company takes them.
Yeah, even then, they have a hard time getting rid of them, but.
No, they just put them out.
Really? I just talked to their manager too, but.
They just put them out, they take them.
Must be nice.
It is. You want to pay $800,000 a year.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, you had an inquiry, Mr. Guide, that when the contract was signed January 1, 2022?
Yeah, I have it.
Three-year agreement?
Yeah, she brought it up. That's how I knew that mattresses were considered bulky waste which go inside the container and then Pete just said that they can't go in the containers anymore.
Did we get that in writing?
No. Like I said, maybe you need to make a phone call.
Yep.
Figure that out, because that'll give us some wiggle room if we go to take that out of that, you know, not doing that with them because, like I said, it's a breach of contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, that they breached, we wouldn't.
Right, we didn't breach it, they breached it.
Exactly.
But yeah, that's, that's important. Pete, did you watch our last meeting?
I did not get a chance to yet.
Okay, I gotta try to remember what we talked about.
Some of it, he explained, we didn't know what the, the letters that he had written on there and that was for the demo, for the bags and the barrels.
Oh, yeah, C and D.
Yeah, that C and D stuff.
Yep.
And then, so we're working towards for payment to do electronics from now on?
Mm-hmm.
How's that working?
I'm trying to get ahold of the credit card company, because when I got the new laptop, apparently it's not syncing.
Yeah.
So I gotta get the credit card company and Armon on the same phone call to get that squared away. So hopefully Thursday or early next week.
And then that way there, it'll be all set, it'll go right to, into the proper account, treasurer will be able to.
Mm-hmm.
Access the funds from there.
Yep, hopefully. Get it all set up.
Very good.
So when Peter indicates that he has the technology ready to go, we'll come back to the board and ask you to make a motion to define what's the acceptable forms of payment at the transfer station and we'll do another 30-day notice so that people know it's coming.
Yeah.
And.
It's appropriate.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, for, sorry, on the digital payments, is this going to be card only or is it, are we going to bring in like the Venmo, the Cash App or any of the other digital ones?
Only just card only.
Just card only?
Card only, yeah, that's the whole idea, we're making it very simple and very easy.
Yeah, we won't do Venmo or Cash App, we'll just do easier.
They changed their, their agreements and their processing things too constantly.
We contemplated taking checks as well. We currently have very few returns for insufficient funds for non-transfer related transactions and it is kind of cumbersome to get that sorted out. If we did credit cards and checks, I'm afraid we would increase the workload on the finance people trying to track down people who wrote a bad check.
Yeah, we'll just stick with one form.
I would rather stick with one form and I think we had talked, me and you, Jim, about if somebody like has to pay cash or wants to pay cash, then they can go down to the town hall and pay there.
Mm-hmm.
And Robin or somebody else can write a receipt and bring it to you and you can be like, okay, you're all set. Do you know what I mean? That way it's not in your hands at all.
Mm-hmm.
Be like, if you want to dump this load that's $100, you're going to, and you only want to pay cash, you're going to go to the town hall. It's out of your hands, you don't accept cash, you know what I mean?
And that'll be part of our notice too, so.
Absolutely, like, I get it, some people want to be cash only and that's fine, but you're going to have to go to the town hall and pay because it's not going to be accepted there any longer.
So Peter, they would return to the transfer station with a receipt indicating they've paid and what they said they were going to dump?
Exactly.
They would take that and, well, maybe they'll have to give them two copies so you can keep one, knowing what they did.
We can hash something out, like they come to the transfer station, I can write the receipt out, they take that to town hall, that way they know exactly how much.
Sure.
Yeah.
People like. I mean, it's going to be a rare occurrence, I think.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's going to happen all the time that it's going to be like this cumbersome, but definitely, that way you don't have to worry about it, you know?
So as early as today, Peter got a, a quote for a fence repair and I want to preface this observation by sharing with you that every single department in this town, especially our facility maintenance technician, are having an awful time getting anyone to come in.
Sure.
Sometimes our jobs just aren't big enough to warrant staging and whatever's required to get the job done, but Peter was able to get a quote for 3167 to fix the fencing at the transfer station and that was all of it, right?
Mm-hmm, that's all the issues on the main fence and then around the compactors, replacing all that, bolting it down, yeah.
And the thing, thing is, I, I wrote back and just said, can you get one more number from a different vendor so we, so we, we would know that this is a better deal, for example, than what someone else could do. But it's like pulling teeth, you just can't get anybody to give us a quote. How long did it take you to do this, Pete?
Couple of weeks.
Well, we, we've been working on it for a while, Peter and I have been talking about this for well over a year.
Is that?
Yeah.
Let me see. The, I thought he was getting, you know, in school you used to have to go see the teacher for the pass to use the bathroom?
No, I thought he was going to whack me.
The, what kind of expertise would you, do you have to be a fence person to do the job that we have or do you have a handyman?
I think any contractor should be able to do that, but it's chain link, so, yeah, I mean.
Well, if you go through a contract, they're going to sub it out to a professional fence installer and then they're going to put their vig on top of that and we end up paying for that.
Because there is a handyman based in Newton called Team Handyman, I think that is, that might be somebody to try. They don't, they don't have to go far to do it, you know?
Pete, how long has your fence been messed up?
That part there is probably a couple of years, the, I'm sorry, the part by the compact has probably been a couple of years. The issues with the main fence, we had a branch drop on one the other week, the latches for the gates, every winter with the wind, it just stresses those things out. So that's one of the things that they're coming in with new latches if they cannot repair our current ones, so we can latch it up nice and tight, don't have to worry about the wind blowing it open.[1575.24]
And then they're correcting the opening, um, from the transfer station to the other one that's open too, right? That's gonna get closed in?
Yes.
With gates?
Yep, yep. That's, uh, one of the latches we have to fix as well.
Yeah, I'm good. This is a reputable company. I'll make the motion. I motion to approve, what? The fence quote?
Can I, can I, before you, can I make a friendly suggestion? We, we don't name the company and we say not to exceed.
Sure. I approve
So that way if somebody, if, if you're able to get another quote and the quote is for five hundred dollars cheaper, then you have a budget now and you can go with that one. Does that make sense?
I'm, yeah, cause I can just So what Matt's saying is, I can do it easy.
Okay.
I motion to approve to fix the fence at the transfer station not to exceed thirty-two hundred dollars.
Seconded by Joe. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's unanimous. So if you get that second quote that comes in underneath that
Go with that one.
If not, yeah.
I see contractors driving all the time, not that they're dumping their stuff, but I'll start asking around.
First thing you do is you ask them if they watched this meeting. If they did, you skip them and you go
He didn't even watch this meeting.
I know, exactly. Our ratings aren't what they used to be.
Some of the other stuff, Pete, for updates. The oil tank, why don't you let everybody know about that, what's going on?
So the oil tank, right now we have, um, a portable container from, uh, Mike Pevero, the road agent. Uh, we're putting all our single gallon jugs in there, waiting for him to pump out the big tank. And then hopefully we'll be moving that one into the, um, the garage that's right there.
Sure.
That way there, it'll be covered under OSHA specs.
Yep.
Because it's supposed to be, um, so that rain can't wash over that, any oil that might be spilt on it doesn't get washed off, washed down and onto the ground and, um, contaminate the ground.
Is it just like a heating oil tank?
Uh, it's, it's used oil for recycling, transmission fluid as well.
How many gallons is it?
Uh, our tank is three seventy-five.
So it's like a heating oil tank in your house, just above
This is actually, it's a plastic round tank.
It is plastic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I deal with used oil, so that's why I was asking if he needs the bins that go underneath it, but if it's plastic already, you don't need that.
Yeah, no. It's a big, um, big dome type plastic.
Sure.
With, um, the opening on the, the top to be able to unscrew and pour it in. And what else we got going on, Pete?
Uh, in regards to which
Well, I, I had asked you about the configuration of the containers.
Yes, we did have that conversation.
Yeah.
Um, so they had a, um, a private company come in, this is before I started working here, that went over the layout of the transfer station. And they moved it to where it is now, so it's more effective. People basically go in and if they follow our instructions, they just drop off and then they're out the gate.
Sure.
The way it's supposed to go.
So, just happened to see my drawing, Pete, from last time when I was going through my stuff. Um, I had a couple of suggestions. I'm not changing, I'm only changing the containers that they drop, not the way you have it laid out. Do you get what I'm saying? Um, as you know, I go there often. And, um, one of my issues was getting, when you, when you, when you have to back up to the, um, to the bulky ones, you're like pulling into the metal pile.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And I was like, really don't like that. And then I saw Mike pushed bulldozed everything back there. So what I was saying to Jim one day is like, he should line up his containers that way, this way, right? I drew a picture, I'll show it to you. And then get numbers, a big, we can get them, big numbers that are magnetic on each one.
Chalk we use.
Sure, or that, perfect. And then if they're lined up, now you can pull in, you can have people backed up and I'm not driving into the metal pile. I know it was big at the time, but it's not as big now, but you get what I mean. And then it's all, and it's further back, so it's not like right there.
Yeah.
Um, that was a suggestion I had. What the hell? Oh, the other one was, that was a suggestion, I'll show you this, but the other thing I wanted to ask you is, when all those mattresses were stacking up out there, did you call them and ask for another container?
Yeah, well, we had the empty containers there. I was hoping they were gonna come down, pull all the ones out of the clothesstop so we can stuff more in there.
Okay.
Yeah, they wouldn't touch them because they were wet, so.
So I get that, so that would, right, cut down on this. So you're not, are you putting mattresses in containers normally?
Not right now, no.
Not at all?
That container that they dropped off for us, the clothesstop, is, it's almost full now, but we're using that one.
For the mattresses?
Correct, yeah.
So like, how many mattresses are you getting that you're filling them up this often? Is it, is it, I mean, I don't wanna go through receipts, but it's like a lot that you're going through, what, a container or two a week or?
Oh, no, no, it's like every other week or once a month right now.
Really?
Yeah. When we had that big stack, I mean, it was a lot.
Yeah, right, right.
A, a mattress maybe once a day, a couple of mattresses a day.
Yeah. I just, their contract says within twenty-four hours, they'll pull it out when it's done. You know, when you see it there for like a week or two, you're like, what is going on, you know? Um, but that's something Jim can deal with because
Yeah.
But you could understand why we even brought this up, just cause, as I've said, the transfer station is the face of Newton. Not the town hall. It's somewhere where everybody goes. I'm sorry!
Yeah.
Everybody goes to the, to the transfer station. So it's like, let's try to, we're trying, right? All of us trying to make it better, make it work better and clean it up and everything else. Um, so, okay, that's good then.
So with, with the dumpsters, and we, we had, Jim and I had a conversation about this, is where there are now, what I'm thinking about doing is having them set it back about ten, fifteen feet.
Towards the road?
Towards the fence and the road, yeah.
Okay.
So that way we have that extra space there.
Yep.
And at the beginning of the day, we're gonna have one dumpster jut it out.
Sure.
With the number on it, with the door open.
That's the one you fill.
So they don't have to try and huff there.
Sure.
Sofa's over. Do that every day, just, just so they can't miss the dumpster.
Right, so that's the one they fill, is the one that you're pulling out, okay?
Open up there, we'll open the back up and just back right in and dump this.
Sure, that's, that's great, that'll work, you know?
I remember when I first started working here, we only had two dumpsters down there.
Yeah.
And over the years, we just have to keep it
Keep adding, right.
Just incredible the amount of waste we've gotten.
Which is surprising by the amount of storage, uh, companies that are out there, but
Right.
Well, one, one of the other things I was wondering if it's viable, and, and I've talked about this, the, the lower, the lower field, how we burn and then the pallets, that it would be feasible in my mind for us to take that burnt, the burnt wood that's there, and we could get that into the back corner. And then the pile of all the grass and stuff that you've been turning over or whatever. I don't see why we can't take that and mix that in with the burnt down there and make that whole back lot for that, for dumping the wood, for dumping the pallets and doing all of that down there, freeing up that room for you with your dumpsters up there, right? It lessens people from, because of the metal pile that Dan's talking about, all that small stuff doesn't get picked up even with those powerful magnets. There's a bunch of it that comes out because of the way it gets dragged and stuff. So to try to, um, reduce the people in the town from backing up and possibly getting flats, I think it would be more viable to keep all of that stuff.
So you want compost down back as well?
Yeah, compost, all of that. And get, let's get that cleaned up so it, it's in, um, better shape, a better setup situation down there instead of sprawled out all over the place.
All right, I will have to look into that. Um, yeah, I'll do a walk around Thursday, see what we have for space there and how it's gonna work traffic wise.
Because the, the compost pile, not a lot of that seems to be getting used and a lot of that's getting a lot bigger. So that's why I'm saying if we take that and we mix it in with the, the burnt wood and stuff, that would be good fill because now you're adding that wood, which is gonna firm it up a little bit.
Yep.
And it, and then with the compost, it's gonna make it viable because it's adding nutrients
Yeah.
to whoever wants it. And we could let townspeople, if they need it, would be able to come down and with the little Kubota, if they had a pickup truck or whatever, we could dump some in there and let them
Yeah.
use it that way.
And that's why we have so much compost is people want it for fill, but it, it's not good fill, it's just too organic.
Exactly, so that's why if we mix it with that wood, it'd be a lot better for fill.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it would serve two purposes.
Yeah, wood chips would be nice for that.
Yep, so.
Pete, I have a question on the, do we get a lot, we get a lot of pallets in, don't we, down there?
Yes.
Why can't we just offer those to the townspeople? Rather than having to have you stack them back there and have big burns and stuff like that?
We're not currently stacking them back there right now and I think we've, we've done this, it's almost like Easter Sunday, we open and close. Um, it's an insurance issue. Right, right now, it's an insurance issue.
Every, uh, every couple of years, somebody brings it up again, why don't we let people go down there and, and think, my thing is all
I'm all for it.
Pete's all for it. My thing is, I like to leave stuff at the dump, I don't like to ever come home with anything from the dump, but
People are burning a lot of pallets of fuel.
Right, the thing about it though is, the question just needs to be asked of insurance.
Stop asking.
There you go.
Stop asking.
That's right.
Well, no, I mean, currently
Stop calling our insurance company and asking them, because the answer's always gonna be no.
Right, I mean, so
Can I buy a ladder?
No. I guess the answer I'm getting, I'm not calling anybody, but I guess the answer I'm giving you is, if you wanna change it, we probably have to ask our insurance company. If you don't wanna ask our insurance company, by extension, the policy would, would stay the same. People, people are, are, you know, we have plenty of people in town who will drive their truck there, mess up their tires and expect us to pay for their tires.
Yeah, okay.
You know? So, that's just where I'm at, but, you know, Pete, you're, you're the one out there, you're hearing from people all the time. You probably hear the complaints, why don't you let me go there and all? All I wanna do is get something to burn the wood, but
If you don't see it, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I get it. Um, go ahead.
Before we get off the topic, um
I have, I'm still on topic.
Oh, go ahead.
Do you have an unwritten policy on the stuff that people leave there for the free pile?
Yeah, it's, it's nothing broken, nothing missing pieces, no chemicals, just the normal stuff, yeah. Uh, other than that, no posted furniture, because it'll get ruined in the rain.
Sure. I would almost say nothing with fabric.
Yeah.
It would be, right? But like, so I guess my question is, do you, after like, I don't know, like every Sunday night, be like, all right, clear it all out, start over again?
We try and give it at least two weeks.
Sure.
And then
And then just, it doesn't matter if you just dropped it yesterday, we're starting over fresh and this is what it is.
Two weeks minimum.
Okay. I just, I had some residents actually ask me, cause, and they also specifically said, if there's anything gross, don't put it out there, so.
I can't tell you how many arguments I've had with people over the years.
Yeah, like, I don't know what it was, they said there was a toaster out there and it was all dirty. I'm like, oh, all right, well, I get that. And she's like, who was gonna want that? I'm like, good point.
Moldy car seats for kids.
Yeah, right, just Pete, you know what, just save face, be like, all right, I'll take it. And then as soon as you see taillights, Kubota, just go. It doesn't matter, you know? It's not, just
Then they're gonna think that someone took it and they're gonna keep doing it.
They're gonna feel good about it, whatever.
Car seats, I don't, I don't charge for those.
Exactly.
So I, I just tell them to throw it away.
Yeah, I would say, anything with fabric, don't even bother.
Yeah.
You know, cause
Unless it's a sofa, they're paying for that.
That's right.
Jim?
Just an observation, we talked about a lot of stuff tonight related to the transfer station. Uh, Pete, for the next meeting, and you need not attend, if you could just make a list of what you understood the, the board is looking to, to accomplish, would you put a timeline to the right-hand side of each task that we were talking about? So we have a, an idea of what's going on and we, what the expectation of the community can be. And I don't think I heard a vote to amend the fee schedule of Newton residents and out-of-town residents as recommended by the transfer station manager.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dan. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's unanimous. So your fee schedule's been approved.
Who seconded that?
Uh, Joe, I think.
Joe.
Or Dan?
Of course. Pete, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's a new record for, um, transfer station, the longest amount of time we've, uh, discussed it at one meeting, so.
Yeah, anything, um, we are gonna bring up, um, the fact two weeks ago, had, uh, three weeks ago, right, and more than that, at our last meeting, I'll say that, that we talked about the code of ethics and we were gonna bring that up today. Unfortunately, um, an error was made and we forgot to put that and post it for tonight's, um, agenda. So that will be on the, um, we have revised it and we've gone over it. It is posted and, um, we will be going over that next meeting to approve that.
September nineteenth, right?
Yes, yes.
So anybody that's interested out there that would like to come, um, but please, before you do come, go on the town website. You can look at, uh, how it's been amended. You should, you should still be able to pull up the old one, I believe.
Yeah.
You can do your comparison and due diligence that way there, you're coming armed with information because information makes you knowledgeable about what you're talking about and we appreciate that. Um, with that being said, I don't think that there's anything else.
I've got a really, Joe, I think beat me.
Yeah, okay, I wanna talk about, uh, Newton's two hundred and seventy-fifth year anniversary.
Oh, yeah.
It, it's coming up next year and, uh, the last time we did this in nineteen ninety-nine, it was, I guess, was very successful. Uh, we pulled out the folders, well, the folks now CS pulled out the folders this week and, uh, there was a lot of information in there with, uh, with respect to a lot of things that went on. And with that all being said and done, I spoke with the chairman of the historical society today and he is gonna bring it up to his people on the eleventh. They have a meeting about possibly taking it up, you know, moving it forward. And I also spoke to the, uh, I spoke to, uh, Pat from the, uh, secretary of the rec commission and, uh, we'll talk about that at our next meeting to see if those two folk can join, join forces and perhaps combine Newton Day and the Old Home Day for, for next year's celebration. So with that, with that all said and everything, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to see if the board would, uh, would, uh, would, uh, entertain putting a, uh, putting, excuse me, uh, putting a feeler out there to ask folks to, uh, volunteer for a committee to, uh,
Oh, like a two seventy-five committee? I get you. Yeah, I, I'm good with that, definitely.
Right now, we're, we're probably, well, the last time they did this, they started two years ahead. They started in two thousand and seven. They had a warrant article to put twenty-five hundred dollars aside, then the following year, they had another one for ten thousand. Then two thousand and nine, they had a five thousand one, so they already had a, a little bit of a kitty going there, so we'll have to, you know, if we entertain doing this, we probably have to put a
Put something on it.
warrant article together to, um, you know, obtain some funding and whatnot for us, so. But I'd like to see a committee put together and, uh, you know, of, of residents to, uh, see if we can put this together.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Let's see, why not?
Works for me.
Would Joe be the liaison from the board?
I think so.
Like he just volunteered. The rest of us just step back.
I'll, I'll help, but I won't chair it.
Liaison, that's all?
I can be a liaison.
I, I would, uh, add this to what Joe just said is, um, I hate to sound, um, negative, but every time we put out anything to look for volunteers, whether it be a commission or a committee or something like this, a new initiative, uh, it's almost silence on the other end. Uh, we're talking about it now in a meeting, it'll be in the minutes, it'll be on the on-demand video. We'll post it under news.
On video.
Uh, it'll be an email, if you signed up for the emails, I'm sure we'll probably, Joe, I'm, probably, we'll have a booth at Old Home Day maybe with information.
There you go.
I agree.
And I challenge people to, you know, prove me wrong, prove me wrong. People sign up. If you've ever wanted to get involved in the town before and you've, you've always, for whatever reason, you haven't, here's a great, you know, try before you buy situation, you know? This is gonna happen next year, I'm sure it won't be a ton of time, but, you know, prove me wrong and, and let's have like a ton of volunteers for this thing. Because sadly, what's gonna happen is, all the names and titles Joe just mentioned, they're gonna do all the work for the two hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary committee. It's gonna be the same people, it always is, the same people. So, so Newton, Town of Newton, prove me wrong.
Sounds like you got your work cut out for you on a long day. Oh, no, you're not, you're nothing yet until you get people to join.
No power.
And Matt, you had something?
Yeah, so this is, um, real quick one I've alluded to earlier and I think Amanda's still there, you're
She is.
The podium's blocking you. But, um, so this is one of those full circle things for me. When I first got on the board, everybody was like, uh, trick or treat needs to be on a weekend night, a Saturday night, so the kids don't have school the next day. And then we did that for a while, Trish is laughing because she's been there for this. So then people were like, no, 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 Saturday nights is Halloween parties. We do trick or treat on the actual thirty-first, uh, wherever it falls. So I think this year it's on a Tuesday or something like that. So we heard, uh, if you recall last year, now, I, I'll tell you, my kids are of that age. I don't have any issue with it being on, on the weeknight or whatever, but we did hear from some, we got an email from, from a resident who, you know, represents some other mom saying it's, it's too tough, you do it on a weeknight, you're trying to get the kids to bed, you're trying to get them up the next day. So, uh, in the lack, last rec commission meeting, what I proposed, and I'm hoping the board will support this, is it's really pretty easy to put together a Facebook poll, just to get some sort of data. Does not have to be scientific, right? This isn't American Idol, we don't have to have it, you know what I mean? So just to get some sort of data for the board to decide what to do. Cause if, if we have a Facebook poll and it's like seventy-five percent in favor of the thirty-first, then we know what to do. If it's the other way, we know what to do. But, um, just to kinda hopefully put it to bed for a while if we have that data. Now, the added benefit to that will be, we have this new rec page and we can drive people to that page. We want people to like that Facebook page, uh, because that's where we're putting information out about rec. So if we put the word out there through our news sources, which I just listed, then maybe more people will, will go out and, and hit that and, uh, vote on this poll. And the next question's gonna be, what if you don't have Facebook? Um, my thing is, I, I ventured a guess, if, if, if you have a strong opinion of one trick or treat is, you're probably already on Facebook.
Just, just email matt@ember.
Just email me and, uh, no. It's, it's just, it's not scientific, so, um, just some sort of data. Cause right now, everybody you talk to has a strong opinion and they say everybody backs them up on it. I, like, I'm sitting here telling you, you know, we just make it work. It's, you know, the kids go to bed a little later and they wake up maybe a little later. I haven't heard anybody complain about it being on the weeknight, other than, than this group last year. But, so does that sound good?
Yep.
Fine words for a plan.
Sure, cool.
I'm biased, I have five kids and I think it should be on Halloween, so. I know where my vote's going.
Yeah, exactly, and I mean, it would be the, we'll call out the date because it's probably the 28th. Cause the 21st is trunk or treat, we have that, so.
Yeah.
But thank you, Amanda's gonna do that for us, so thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Okay, that's all I have.
Jim?
Mr. Chairman, I have three quick items. First of all, the town's auditors, Vashon, Clouquet and Company out of Manchester, New Hampshire, have indicated that they're coming to Newton on the 25th of September and they'll spend about two days doing fieldwork and then they'll go back to their office and then they'll inundate us with telephone calls, again, for the stuff that they didn't get when they were here for their two days. So that's the start of the audit, they start with fieldwork and it's probably gonna take, I'm not even gonna say a time because I don't know how long it's gonna take.
Yeah.
Probably longer this year than any other year. So again, that's the 25th and they'll be here for two days. I was asked by the auditors, when do I want the audit to come? Well, I'm not shagging papers for these people, so I wanna ask the people who are gonna have to shag the papers. And Peyton thought that would be an okay timeframe and she could make herself available.
Okay.
We received an email today, which had a flyer in it, it's from the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. The VA in Manchester on Smith Road is holding a Women's Veterans Town Hall and Health Fair. It's celebrating 100 years of VA women's health care. It's a forum that's gonna take place on Saturday, September 9th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And staff will be on hand to answer any questions that any of our women veterans may have related to care and health. This will be on the website and it's posted downstairs at the town hall. And lastly, we have another MS form from the DRA that was not ready to be on the agenda. However, we would like to get it in. It's the MSDTB and that really is an acronym, I don't know how they came up with it. But they wanna know what our default budget was and we know what those numbers are. So I'd like you guys to approve and sign the MSDTB. And before I close, I can't thank you, our treasurer collector, for the amount of effort that she put in this last couple of weeks to help us pull this information together. She was just above and beyond and I'm very grateful, very grateful. Thank you, MJ.
Should I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we sign the MSDTB form that needs to be sent to the DRA or whatever.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dan. Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, MJ. And I think it would be about Ms. Brown to bring that up, that we received the resignation. No, not yet.
I wouldn't.
All right.
Real, real quick, so our next meeting is September 19th, so on September 16th is Newton Old Home Day, 10 to 4. It'll be at the Memorial School.
Yes.
There's been plenty of stuff going out, so hopefully everybody knows about it already. And then the senior barbecue, of which I think there's one more day to buy tickets, if I'm wrong, that is gonna happen on September 14th and many, hopefully you'll see a lot of smiling faces from the town there helping out, serving hot dogs and hamburgers.
The date of, right, the 14th?
September 14th, yeah, 4:30, I believe? I think I've got that right, so just everybody, all that stuff's on the website. And Touch a Truck, yeah, is the new thing, that's the Sunday, right, Joe?
Yes.
And the senior barbecue is at the PD as always?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Anything else?
I'm good.
If you bring your truck to Touch a Truck, I don't.
Expect it to be touched?
Exactly, yeah, so. We've got, every member of the board drives a truck, so we gotta make sure that, I'll bring my wife's car, so.
That's a good one.
With that, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:44.
Thank you.